I've had two school tours today, grade four classes. I just want to let you know that we saved some of our holidays. We made my resolution, so we're all good to go for the next couple, couple months. At this time, I'd like to give the opening to Councilor Damian Penner.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Well, the streets are cleaned, the stages have been taken down, and our stomachs are still reeling from the gluttony we subjected to them too over this last weekend at Summer in the City. Even the weather decided to cooperate for almost the entirety of the weekend. And aside from a few gusts of winds that sent some vendors scrambling to catch their tumbling tents, I think overall, we can chalk this year's festival down as another tremendous success. In my time spent on the street at our businesses booth, I get the opportunity to talk to a variety of people, citizens of Steinbach, visitors from other parts of the province, various food vendors, and of course, all the amazing volunteers that helped this festival be one of the most successful annual summer festivals in Manitoba. Just to add, those aren't my words, those are the words from a lot of the vendors around, so very good job. Every year, I get to see firsthand the positive impact that this festival has on our community. There is one time specifically that I enjoy the most over the weekend, though, and that is the early morning on Saturday before the streets start filling up. It gives you an entirely different perspective of the city, being on Main Street without any cars around, the birds usually singing, and the lingering excitement of the night before, matched with the beauty and peace of an empty Main Street. The Wonder Show staff are still eating their breakfasts, and aside from a couple food vendors getting prepared for a busy day and the odd skateboarder enjoying being able to carve a path down an empty roadway, it is peaceful. I found it fitting that yesterday, a Steinbach citizen reached out, Laura Duick, who sent me a poem she wrote about Summer in the City that she asked if I could share with you. So, the poem goes, "Today at Dawn." "Today at dawn, I saw Mr. Jack Rabbit at the fair. Before the wheels turned or people folks woke, he hopped and he skipped to a light melody, wafting in from the heart of the wood. A crescendo developing from the morning bird band inspired Mr. Rabbit at dawn. He dipped and he doped, he circled and hopped while dew lay on the ground. While he circled and hopped, he dipped and docked his way right out of town. I saw him bow and tip his hat as he slipped neath the evergreen grove and disappeared into another world. Into that other world he vanished, where moss and fern covers spread. It is there that he'll bounce and jump on the bids, all arranged for rabbits to play. He'll dance to the tunes in those needlework walls till its green-frosted ceilings cathedral the sky, and its timber pillar and posts cast evening shadows around. The adrenaline will fade as the rabbits partake of one last bidtime hide-and-seek game. And when the sun shuts, the groves' twinkling lights, a calm will pervade that cool forest glade, while all is scurry and noise at the fair. Yes, today at dawn, I saw Mr. Jack Rabbit at the fair. But nary of thought could explain the fun that was fought without ticket bought, so deep in the heart of the wood." I found this poem a fitting juxtaposition to the hustle and bustle that is any festival. There are the bright lights, the loud horns and sirens, the booming bass of the band rocking, the screams and screeches of delight from children, and of course, being located every year beside the merry-go-round, my personal favorite, the high-pitched, tinging carnival songs on repeat. But at the end of the festival, it isn't the rides you rode, the food you ate, or the bands you listened to that you reflect on. It is the conversations you had and the relationships you built, or perhaps even rekindled over the weekend. Summer in the City is the festival that wakes up our city from the dull drums of winter and gets us looking forward to the hot summer ahead and the friends and family that we connected with at the festival to make plans with in the coming weeks. And as we all cleared the street and vanished into our worlds, I would like to say a big thank you to every volunteer, the city staff, the Summer in the City Board, and everyone that helped make this another successful festival. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Penner. Counsel, we have the agenda in front of us, looking for a motion to adopt. Councilor Penner, second by Councilor Siemens. Call for the question, all those in favor. Opposed, that is carried. Counsel, we also have the minutes of May 21st, 2024, regular council meeting, starts on page one. All had a chance to review, looking for a motion to approve. Councilor Hebert, second by Councilor Penner. Call for the question, all those in favor. Opposed, that is carried. Is there any business arising from the minutes? Okay, seeing none, we will move on. It is 7:35, so we will move on to our public hearings. We've got 6A, it is conditional use CU 2024-03. This is referring to Unit 3, 236 Park Road West. At this time, I will close the council meeting, open the public hearing. Mr. Workteen, could you please introduce this file?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you noted, for the particular file, conditional use CU-2024-03, the owner of the property and the applicant for the conditional use is Vernon and Sharon Friesen. Purpose of the conditional use application is to permit a caretaker's residence to be situated on the subject property. The particular use under the City of Steinbach zoning bylaw 2100 defines a caretaker's residence as an accessory dwelling on a non-residential property occupied by the person or family who oversees or guards the operation. Notices as required under the Planning Act have been issued. There is no written correspondence on file with respect to this particular application. It does seek to permit a caretaker's residence within the proposed development, which is zoned as M1, light industrial. The applicant does propose to develop the site as a storage facility for personal and business purposes with living quarters within the structure. And based on the submitted plan, the living quarters do comprise a significant portion of the building. However, the application does meet the definition of the policy within bylaw 2100. There is previous precedent on file. Conditional use file CU-2020-01 was to permit a caretaker's residence within the M1 light industrial zone. This application was approved by council. If council does choose to approve this application, it should be on the condition that the residential component be and remain an accessory use to the storage facility.
Thank you, Mr. Workteen. Is the applicant here today, and do you wish to speak?
I would, hi.
Okay, yeah, just Vernon Friesen?
33056 Hesper Road South, or 35E, because I'm just into the arm of Panover by maybe a quarter mile.
Okay.
I'm just here to answer any questions that you guys might have. I think that was pretty much self-explanatory on what a tent is, to have a residence in a 50 by 70 square foot shop, which is 3,500 square feet, and roughly 1,000 square foot on main level living.
Okay. Counsel, are there any questions for the applicant? Counselor Swakstra?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is, how much time do you expect to be living in this residence? Is this going to be your primary residence? And could you just explain a little bit in terms of what, what the full intent of this is?
I have just recently retired. I have a large property here in Arm of Panover, just behind the dump. And it's large property, and I also have a vacation home in the lake. So my plans are to spend a lot more time at the lake since I'm retired, and possibly vacationing in the winter months. So I'm going to sell my country property and have a residence in my shop. That way, I can keep all my toys, my boats and quads and you name it. And my daughter's got a business in Winnipeg. She has stuff that I could store for her for catering business and that kind of thing. So it's a combination of how much time, it's hard to say. Time will tell as I go along. I can't say I'll be there 50% of the time, but it'll be kind of my home base, so to speak. And then, at the same time, it's in a condo boulevard or whatever of 16 units. And the nice thing is, for the other 16 units or 15 units, is I'm adding a little bit of security to that location, being somebody living on site, looking after the other 16 units. Not that Steinbach isn't safe or anything, but, and I'm not going to be Mr. Policeman, but, but yeah.
Okay, and follow-up question?
Just a follow-up, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just to clarify, is this primarily a residence where you also have some storage? Or is this a storage space which happens to have a caretaker's residence? Because obviously, the intent in the bylaw here is that it would have some association with what's actually happening. And so if you could just clarify a little bit, is this, are you envisioning this as like, this is really a residence and you have your storage there? Or is this, it's primarily a storage business and it's a caretaker's residence to sort of facilitate running it?
Fifty-fifty, I could say. I'll, I'll be there a lot. I mean, at the start, right? Like I said, I don't know where life's going to bring me. I'd like to vacation as much as possible, but, but it's a home inside a shop is what it is. Plain and simple, I guess, but I'm looking at Sky High Restaurant along the airport. Those units up top there, I believe were also residential units. How big there, I don't know if they're 500 square feet or 1,500 square feet, but that's also in a zone of light industrial, correct?
The Sky High Restaurant, that'd be a question for administration. The, the Sky High Restaurant where those hangars were built, there are, there are living units upstairs, the applicant was saying. And that zoning is, is that a similar zoning as this? Is what the applicant was?
My understanding it was, I'm not 100% on it.
The, Mr. Friesen is correct in that there are residential uses within one of the structures in that development. However, offhand, I am not certain as to what the zoning is. It was not presented within the, within the information package as a precedent that's relevant to this particular application, however.
Counselor Penner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You had mentioned first level. Is there multiple levels that are going to be within this?
There will be a second level, yes.
And that's going to?
On partial of the building, and it would be on the residential side.
So the residence is going to be?
That's where I'm going to have two offices upstairs.
And have two offices upstairs, okay.
Or the plan is.
Okay, any further question? Oh, yes, Mr.?
Just a point to be added, Mr. Mayor. Just looking at the city zoning bylaw and the zoning categories, it appears as though the property to which Mr. Friesen refers to is zoned as C3, which is a commercial corridor. So the land use designation would be different than what this particular application refers to.
Okay, and that's why it wasn't put in as a comparable, okay? Good. Any other questions of counsel?
For administration?
Yeah, go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. How does a city determine or would be able to, let's say, know if it's being used as an accessory building versus a residence? Is there any mechanism we have to know, or is it basically on word?
Sorry to clarify, you're referring to the comments about accessory use?
Yeah, like if the residence is in there, how do we know if it's being used for, oversee the business, for example?
At this point, the only reasonable method of determination would be based on the, the footprint that's been presented by the applicant. And as he noted, I believe you said, the estimated residential component is 1,000 square feet, relative to a total building of 3,500 square feet.
Correct.
That would be the basis that this?
And that ratio is acceptable?
It, it is significant. However, the residential component appears to be a, in a minority position relative to the size of the structure.
And then one more question I had, this is in a condo development, correct? Does the condo, the ownership of the condo development have input in this? Do they need to, because it's their condo development? How does that work in terms of needing approval from whoever owns the condo development?
My understanding is that if it is up to any input by the condo association, that would be pursuant to whatever rules the condo association operates under. That the city wouldn't be, wouldn't be aware of those specific requirements.
All right.
Can I add one more thing? The 50 to 70 is enclosed, the back with their little Z there kind of thing, that's an overhang of another 20 feet outside storage. So it's, the structure itself is 50 by 70, 3,500 plus another 20 foot outside covered.
Outside covered storage?
Outside covered storage.
Okay. Any more questions of counsel? Okay. Then I will ask if there's anyone here with comments, questions, or objections to this file. Go ahead, take the podium, please.
Hi, my name is Walden Nustater at 32 Brandt Street. So that's, this request is in our development that we developed, and it is a condo corp that owns, or that's part of, it would be part of the condo corp. And I'm the dominant landowner there, and we're in favor of this request if it, if it meets the approval of the city bylaws and so on. We think it's an advantage to have someone there part-time, living there part-time. I think it's, it's suitable for what we want. We don't want permanent housing there for sure. That's not why we developed it, but we think it's a pretty good fit for where we are.
Okay. I do have, I do have a question for you. The, so the balance of the lots that are there, are they primarily business? Or are they primarily entertainment and, and personal use?
I would, let's see, the ones that are developed so far, there'd be two that would be strictly business and one that would be probably a mix, and one that would be, yeah, one that would be entertainment and, and business as well, yeah. Yeah, that's what's existing there right now.
Okay, good, go ahead.
Thank you for that. Just wondering if more businesses in that, your development, would want to have this set up? Is that something you'd be comfortable with? Or is this kind of just, it's nice of a person there to oversee it? Now, what happens if we start getting ongoing requests for this?
How many more caretakers do we need? That's your question? That's a really good question, Susan. I know, it's, it's a fair question. I'd want to have them alternate their holidays, I think. I, I just don't know how to answer that, I'm sorry. You know, it's a one-off or whatever, but it's a very fair comment. In this case, we have none, so we think it's favorable. So going down the road, I'm not quite sure how I'd answer that. I do see, when, when we sold the Friesens' lot, they did indicate to us that they do have a four-season cottage in, in the north of Steinbach at the lake. And we do know that they spend a fair bit of time down south, and they did sell their business. So we kind of thought that it would be a pretty good, pretty good fit. Not taking for granted that you would approve it here today, but we thought it'd be a pretty good fit for what we have at our site there.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
One question about?
Oh, sorry, there's one more question.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Probably a question that you can't answer, Mr. Nustater, but what happens if somebody would decide to make that a permanent residence in your condo development?
Well, I think that, I'm not sure if the city bylaw is how they work exactly, but I think that because it has to be to a certain size, I think 40% is the maximum that you can have of the building size as a residence. So hoping the bylaw officer would be involved with that type of jurisdiction. Thank you.
Okay, I will ask again, is there anyone here with comments, questions, or objections to this file? I will ask one more time, is there anyone here with comments, questions, or objections to this file? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, open the council meeting. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Penner?
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilor Hebert. Go ahead, Counselor Penner.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. This is a situation that is a one-off. We don't want, as a city, to start seeing commercial land in commercial areas used for personal residencies. However, as the condo owner, Mr. Nustater expressed, this is an advantage to a private property condo corporation to have a caretaker there. And it does, as administration indicated, meet the strict definition of what the policy says in terms of there being an accessory use and, and home aspect within a commercial area. So by definition, it does meet the policy standard, and there is advantage to a private business owner for a private residency to be on private land. So that's why I feel like we should move this, move this forward.
Thank you. Anything further, Counselor Hebert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will agree with Counselor Damian Penner. And I'll also just say that because there's no objections and because the developer is in favor, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't have approval for this.
Okay, is there anything further, counsel? Counselor Hebert?
Just to be transparent to counsel here, the applicant's wife is my cousin. I just want to be transparent. I do have concerns here. Obviously, if we're putting residential into light industrial zoning, I've spoken several times on light industrial. The deciding factor for me here is that this actually is a condo development and not in our industrial, light area. So with that, it's, like I said, I have some concerns in that area. But in this case, I understand that because it's in a condo designation, I could go along with it.
Anything further, counsel? Anything closing?
Nothing further for closing.
Well, counsel, this definitely is, it's not, it's not a question we get asked every meeting. This is, this is definitely a one-off. I, I do believe that in what I've heard from the applicant and Counselor Swakstra, tried, tried to see if you could get that, the usage out of him. But he did, he did say it would be occasional, it would be like, he didn't know. He couldn't give us what it was. But he does say he'll be gone in, in winter, he'll be gone lots of time in summer. So it will be a temporary usage, what I see. So I don't see a problem with it, especially with the, the condo owner, the condo president saying this is, this is acceptable in their, in their area. So I will support this motion. Call for the question, all those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Thank you. Counsel, we'll move on to 6B, which is conditional use CU 2024-04. This is referring to 362 and 366 Main Street. I just have a question for administration at this time. Because B and C are to the same property, do you want to introduce them together and then we'll just handle them concurrently? Like one, one after the other?
You read my mind, Mr. Mayor. I was going to make that recommendation. And I would also add, as far as, once you are prepared to open the public hearing, I would also recommend that both items be held during the same public hearing so that you don't have to close it and then reopen as a second hearing.
Okay.
Just if you could just, if counsel could just deal with it all at one time. And then counsel can deal with the specific decisions for the separate files separately after the public hearing is concluded.
Okay. Okay, counsel, we'll be taking B and C. They're a conditional use and a variance linked to the same property. We'll take care of them both in the same public hearing. Then we'll close the public hearing, and then we'll take care of them one at a time with our decision. So at this time, I will close the, the council meeting, open the public hearing. Mr. Workteen, could you please introduce these files?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you noted, there is, there is two files under consideration that are related. First, conditional use application CU-2024-04, and variance application file V-2024-04 for properties commonly known as 362 and 366 Main Street in Steinbach. The owner of the property is Solomon Budala Enterprises, Inc., with the applicant for the variance and the conditional use being a veto, Inc. Purpose of the conditional use application is to permit a multifamily residential development within the C2 commercial community zone. And secondly, the purpose of the variance application is firstly, to allow for a maximum of six stories of building height, whereas the maximum height for buildings situated along Main Street is five stories according to City of Steinbach zoning bylaw 2100. And secondly, to permit a total building height of 78 feet, whereas a maximum of 50 feet is permitted in the C2 commercial community zone. The applicant is proposing to build a mixed-use commercial and residential building on the subject properties. Notices as required under the Planning Act have been issued. There is just one item of correspondence received on file, a copy of which counsel would have received within their mail bins earlier this afternoon. With respect to the applications, firstly, for the conditional use application, this particular property is located within the city's central business district, planned overlay district. And policies within this planned overlay district seek to provide greater flexibility for development to encourage a broader range of compatible uses. With the proposed development of a six-story mixed-use structure, it is intended that the commercial uses would appear on the main floor with the multifamily uses on the remaining floors of the property. The, the currently vacant property is used by an adjacent property for vehicle parking. It is recommended that, should the intent be that parking for the adjacent property continue for this site, that an agreement for that purpose is recommended. And in addition to this application, it is also noted within the submitted site plan that there is no direct access to Main Street that is proposed. The applicant would be required to provide for appropriate access and egress from the site to a public road as a component of the city's required site plan approval process, and also in accordance with the city's zoning bylaw requirements. In addition, the application for variance is with respect to the permitted height of the proposed structure. As noted in the advertisement, it is being proposed to have both six stories and a height of 78 feet, both which exceed the requirements under zoning bylaw 2100, whereas five stories are permitted for total building height, and it also sets a maximum building height of 50 feet. All of the previous comments that I have noted regarding the planned overlay district, the adjacent property using the existing site for parking, and the, the anticipated access to a public street are all applicable for the variance application. Generally, after review from administration, recommendation is for counsel to approve both CU-2024-04 and V-2024-04, subject to any new evidence being presented at this hearing, and that the developer enter into a development agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Workteen. Before we move on, I do have one question for administration. Mr. Workteen, the, your comments here, the, about no direct access to Main Street, and you are looking at having an egress from another site. Now, that, any cross-access agreements, would that be taken care of in the development agreement?
There would be provision that across access agreements, to provide appropriate access would be necessary, but that would be subject to a separate agreement process by either the applicant and/or the owner.
Okay, so that I would have to take care of with landowners?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is the applicant here today?
Good evening, mayors and councils. Good to be back. My name is Stefan Hodelman, 36161 Lowen Boulevard. I'm excited to pitch this proposal. But I believe this is going to be the first bigger development in the last 10 years, with the credit union being of similar size and scale, and slightly higher, obviously, and bigger. Yeah, the, as, as mentioned, the intention is to have bottom-floor commercial. Yeah, as mentioned, the intention is to have bottom-floor commercial, and we have about half of the space already spoken for. So generally, when I work with other projects, it's always developers fighting for the elimination of the bottom-floor commercial, especially in the city of Winnipeg, you see it all the time, developers don't want to do the commercial. Here, we feel like an appetite is there for commercial on Main Street, and the residential components suits well. That concept, you can see it all along, for example, Pembina. If you drive along Pembina, all the bigger apartment blocks have commercial on the bottom, and it benefits foot traffic, obviously. And yeah, I think it'll be good for Steinbach. So, thanks.
Okay. And okay, that is the conditional use. So we're looking at the conditional use, which is allowing the residential on top. Okay. Council, are there any questions for the applicant on the conditional use? I see no questions, so you can have a seat. I will now ask if there's anyone here with comments, questions, or objections to this file. Okay, go ahead, take the podium.
I'm Ewok Kazdor. The only question, we discussed it a little bit, but just for clarity, how many residential suites would this building have? And I'm asking because of parking.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
Yeah, you said thirty-two.
Yeah. And I think there's 66 parking spots?
Sixty-seven, I believe.
Sixty-seven? And that, council's good with that equation?
Well, thirty-two, and thirty-two would, thirty-two units would require one and a half plus 10%. And then what would the commercial component need?
Definitely just on the parking areas. We are definitely following all city.
Mr. Workteen, are they complying with the parking requirements?
My understanding is that they are in compliance with the zoning by law requirements.
Okay. They are in compliance with the zoning by law. Okay? Is that, that's your only question?
That was my only question.
Is there anyone else with comments, questions, or objections to this file? I'll ask one more time. Is there anyone here with comments, questions, or objections to this file? Okay, we will, that one will be closed. We'll move on. We'll look at the variance now, the V 2024-04, also the same properties. And the variance is for a height variance from, to go to 78 feet, which is now allowed 50 feet in that zoning. Does the applicant want to speak to that? No? Okay. Okay, then we will, I will ask if there's anyone here with comments, questions, or objections to this file? I will ask again. Is there anyone here with comments, questions, or objections to this file? Okay, seeing none, I feel it's redundant to ask one more time, so I will move, I will close the public hearing, open the council meeting. Council, we'll go back to the conditional use, conditional, 6B, the conditional use, CU 2024-04. How would you like to proceed? Councilor Penner?
Motion to approve.
Seconded by Councilor Swakstra. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a very exciting development, I believe, for our community. In the past 10-plus years that I've been on council, this is exactly the type of thing we've been wanting in our downtown, where it builds a lot of density, keeping our downtown vibrant. We've got the new event center happening, the SCU's down there. If we have, you know, lots of density as well, that just helps to keep, yeah, downtown a place people want to be. And I think this is a great project. I like that there's commercial, obviously, on the main floor, and then with the residential on top. I don't see why we wouldn't approve this project when this is exactly the type of thing we've been envisioning for our downtown.
Thank you. Anything further?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Councilor Penner that this is very much consistent with what we want to see downtown. We want to see more density. Having a mixed use where you have commercial at the bottom and residential above, that makes sense, and it's good urban planning. It's consistent with our direction that we're going. And as the city manager noted, this is obviously in our central business district and our planned overlay section where we have intentionally want to have some flexibility, so that way these kinds of developments can happen. So I absolutely think we should move ahead.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councilor Penner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm also going to vote in approval of this. Often, often you get asked this on council, how do we get more businesses downtown? And the answer is usually, we need more population, and we need more density. And then they ask, well, how do we get more population? How do we get more density? And you answer, we need more businesses downtown within walking distance. So this is a two-pronged approach that this developer is taking to really try and reinvest into downtown, much as the city has done, much as this credit union has done. So this is that next step to invest into our downtown to keep it vibrant and alive.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councilor Hubert and Councilor Seaman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really appreciate what they're going to do here, because this is one of the vacant lots, it's been vacant for a couple of years. And we have a few others on Main Street as well, and it's really nice to see somebody moving ahead on this. So yes, I'm in favor, and I'll vote in favor.
Anything further, Council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just might repeat a few of the words, but when we first envisioned what the central business district would look like, or the CBD would look like downtown, this was part of the vision. That was before the credit union arrived and before the event center. And this was part of the vision, overall vision, that we would increase the height on Main Street, that we would have commercial on the bottom floor and residential above. I think this is, so we've got the event center, that will be completed sometime later this year, as well as the credit union is already in place. This would be another piece of that vision that we had for downtown. And hopefully, we get more of that, but this is certainly another piece. And I think also, it is an exciting project for Steinbach. And to increase density downtown, we've been talking about that, and I think it is key.
Thank you. Councilor Hubert?
Not to be left out. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I figured you were going to say something, too.
As indicated, I agree with all the comments that have been made. This application is located within the central business district. Council's been pursuing a downtown that has more density within the commercial area, and this application absolutely fits the vision, and therefore, the applicant, the application should be granted.
Thank you. Anything closing?
Yeah, I would just like to say, the vision for downtown, as we've mentioned many times, predates, I think, anybody on this council as well. But it is very rewarding to be able to see some of these things, because as council, so many decisions are so long-term, and actually, you're setting things up for after you're gone. So to be, you know, able to see some of these things and see the downtown developing the way that has been planned for decades now is really exciting.
Thank you, Council. Everyone put on, everyone spoke, so you put a lot of pressure on me, but you said all the good stuff. But I'm just going to say it over again, then. Yes, for years, for at least a decade, or more than a decade that I've been on council, we have talked about densifying downtown. How do we do it? There was just, there was just no way. It's developer-driven. We had to wait till the developer wanted to do it. And no matter how much desire and how much vision we had for our downtown, it took till the developer would actually pull the trigger. I do believe it has something to do a little bit with the credit union coming up. The credit union was the catalyst to this, and then us putting the event center where we did. I think that's also going to spur development downtown, because people are going to want to be around where activity is, and it's showing. And this is very, I agree with Councilor Penner, this is a very exciting project for our community. I've always loved mixed use. I think it's the best use of land, is to have as many uses on one piece of land, and that's where, that's where this is going to come in. And I really, I want to congratulate the developer in doing this and in following, I guess, the dreams set by council for our downtown. Call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Well, after we've said all those nice things, we're still not done with this property. So we've got variance V 2024-04. Now we will be, we've had the public hearing on the variance. Council, how would you like to proceed? Councilor Seaman?
Motion to approve.
Seconded by Councilor Penner. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, we'll repeat a little bit of what was said, but when we built the concept of the central business district for downtown in our community plan 12, 14 years ago, whenever that was, part of the vision was as to that we raised Steinbach from one level, the Main Street of Steinbach from one level to more levels with commercial on the bottom and residential on top. The vision was initially, I believe, if I remember, that all the discussions, was to have commercial and then two levels of residential on top, or three. And so, and we would like to continue. This does more than that. We also have precedence with the credit union building being higher than that. So I think this would be, this would add, this certainly adds to our Main Street, you heard that earlier, but it does add to our Main Street and adds height, and that was part of what the vision was with the central business district.
Thank you. Anything further?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, you see certain cities around, across our nation, struggling with trying to get height on their downtown, actually going as far as having penalties and fines and just not allowing permits that don't have height. And so to then be a council that would say, no, it's too high on our Main Street, would be a little bit ironic, so the variance is in good order.
Thank you. Anything further, Council? Anything closing?
No, sir.
Council, I do agree. I think, I think the height will be welcomed. I think it's going to change the skyline of our city. It's going to be, it will be harder to see things, because buildings will be in the way, but that's okay. We can walk around them. One thing I do like about this project is that, exactly like we envisioned, the building is right on the sidewalk. The parking is in the back. What we wanted to do is, we've always envisioned a clean Main Street where you drive down and it's just, it's businesses, buildings, and it gives that, it gives the impression of the amount of business and life that's happening in those buildings. And that's what I see. That's what's exciting about this. Call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Council, we have 6D. This is variance V 2024-05. This is referring to 204 Chrysler Gate. I will at this time close the council meeting, open the public hearing. Mr. Workteen, could you please introduce this file?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This application for variance, file V-2024-05, for property with civic address of 204 Chrysler Gate, is being applied for, and the owners of the property are Benjamin and Agnetha Taves. Purpose of the variance application is to permit a 14.15-foot rear yard setback, whereas City of Steinbach zoning by law 2100 requires properties within the RLD residential low-density zone to have a minimum rear yard setback of 25 feet. The applicant has constructed a sunroom on the back of the house that is too close to the property line. There are, or there have been, notices issued pursuant to the Planning Act. There are eight items of correspondence that have been received on file, copies of which have been placed in the council's agenda package. This is, this file does have a bit of history. The applicant originally built a deck on the rear yard of the subject property, and based on the construction and the dimensions of the deck at the time of construction, a building permit was not required. Subsequently, the owner built an enclosed sunroom on top of the existing deck and attached the sunroom to the existing residential structure, and a building permit was not acquired prior to that construction. The subject property contains one side of a duplex structure and is located on a corner lot for which there is an aerial image in the agenda package for council's information. This property and the majority of the surrounding properties are side-by-side duplexes, which tend to have smaller rear yards. The owner does wish to bring this property into compliance to facilitate the sale of the property. This would require the city's consideration of a building permit for the attached sunroom structure, which has been submitted by the owner. Administration is currently reviewing the application for permit. Bringing this property into compliance would also require council's consideration of the variance application, which is the purpose of this public hearing, which was also submitted after the fact. There are two precedents that administration has provided information to council on with respect to similar situations. File V-2018-06 at 66 Edgewood Street did apply in respect of a sunroom built onto an existing deck that was then also attached to a residential structure. Council did deny this variance and ordered the sunroom to be removed. Secondly, file V-2021-06 at 55 Coral Crescent, an addition, was built onto an existing residential structure. However, it wasn't entirely similar in that a building permit was obtained by the applicant. However, the structure that was built did not match what was applied for under the building permit. Council may wish to impose a fine upon the applicant due to no building permit having been obtained prior to construction. And should council choose to approve this application, it is recommended that it be subject to a building permit being obtained that includes an acceptable structural engineer's certification for the addition, that the remedial work to the addition be completed to bring the structure into compliance, and that any approval be subject to the consideration of a fine by council as it may deem appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Workteen. Is the applicant here today? Do you wish to speak? Just state your name and your address.
Okay.
And then, and then you can start.
My name is Ben Taves, my wife Neri, and that's my daughter Marina. Yeah, we built a, I called the city for a permit for, to build a deck, and then they said, I don't need a permit for that. And then a while later, a year later or so, I called in, and I wanted to put a gazebo on there. They said, go ahead, we don't need a permit for a gazebo. While we were after a roof. Then, and we did that, but the wind took that away, 300 meters into the field, and a year later, we built another one. The wind took that one also away. So then we built a stronger one, but we did not obtain a building permit, because we thought, we never done that. Then I take this very hard, it's hard for me. Then April, we came, called Cody to come and have a look at my building, my sunroom. And in the first place, we never had intended to build a sunroom. We just wanted a roof. That's it. But with the wind and with the insects, mosquitoes and everything, and bees, we enclosed it over three or four years. And now I went to the city, called Cody, and he came over immediately and looked at it, and he liked the building, he liked it, everything, what he saw. And then, but he said, we need a building location certificate. So then I went to survey, so they came and surveyed it immediately, and then I brought Cody a Lacy copy of that plan. They said, we need a variance, and we need a building permit, and we need an engineer's structure and engineer's report. Well, we did all that. And I must say, I must say, you are very good staff. They... They were very helpful in applying, well, for all this and, uh, suggesting what to do, what steps to do and, uh, and even Justina, she was very helpful in, uh, in, in doing all, and they did all the work for us there and, uh, we, we can just say good, good stuff about your staff that you have.
Thank you.
And, uh, now we're asking to, uh, allow us the sunroom to keep and continue to enjoy it. We have, the last couple of years, we had our family gatherings in there, even in winter, like you have a, just a plugged in construction heater and, uh, just for that time and then we, we take it out for that and so, anyway.
Okay. Now, I have a question for you. So you've seen the engineer's report?
Yeah, of course.
So you, you, you recognize and understand the work that has to be done to bring this up to court?
Well, yeah, it's not finished yet. It's far and I will, uh, and we, we will cooperate with, with Cody and with Lacy and whatever, whatever the city requires for, for your, your, uh, policies, we will follow all that, yes.
Okay. Uh, are there any questions of counsel? Okay. There's no questions, so you can, you can take a seat and, uh, I, I, it's a public hearing, so now I have to ask the gallery if they've got any concerns. So is there anyone here with comments, questions or objections to this file? I'll ask again, is there anyone here with comments, questions or objection to this file? I'll ask one more time. Is there anyone here with comments, questions or objections to this file? Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, open the council meeting. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counsel Swakstra?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will make a motion, uh, for counsel to approve the variance application, subject to the owner receiving build it, per, building permit approval, subject that the owner complete the structural work to bring the addition into compliance and subject to a one thousand dollar fine. I so move.
I'll second.
Second? Okay, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, um, it's always difficult dealing with, uh, after the fact variance requests, um, because we're faced with a structure that is already there. But one of the criteria that I, uh, try to use initially is asking the question of, let's assume, uh, that the application, that the structure hadn't been built and we were seeing this as just an application. And so, uh, have we granted variances of around ten feet or so for structures like a sunroom? Yes, we have. Um, would we likely grant one if no one in the neighborhood was objecting? Yes, we likely would. Would we grant it if it was built properly according to all the required structure work? Yes, we would. So in terms of, in terms of the actual variance itself, the, leaving aside the moment that it had already been constructed, which shouldn't have happened in, uh, prior to a variance, but in terms of the evidence, uh, I think that in all probability, we would be approving it if it was built properly, especially when you have no objections. Um, now, what we have here is a situation where the structure has already been built. Uh, and, uh, you know, we have been consistent on this, that when there has been an after the fact variance request, we have either denied in some cases, although, and those are the more extreme ones, where it's something that could not be rectified based on the number of objections and based on this type of variation and based on the fact that we've had in the past, people have ignored, stopped work orders, which is not the case here. Uh, and, uh, also, uh, the, uh, but in this case here, uh, you, we don't have anything on, uh, that is nearly that extreme. And so, uh, we have also sometimes often levied a fine. And so I think a fine is appropriate. It sends a message that we need to do our homework. And even though I believe it's an honest mistake, we still do need to make it clear that, uh, it is far, far, far better to, uh, to apply before rather than later. It is better to get permission than to ask forgiveness afterwards, although I am prepared to the grant of forgiveness in this case.
Thank you. Any, uh, Counsel Siemens?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, uh, I agree with the motion. I also, uh, met and I, I, I saw, I was at the location with the Taveses. I also talked to a few neighbors and they had no objections to the location, uh, as well, or the sunroom. And, uh, this is an unusual situation. Again, uh, a deck was built where there wasn't a requirement for permit, as we heard, and over the next four or five or six years, slowly a sunroom appeared, uh, each year adding to the structure. And, uh, didn't understand or didn't ask whether they needed a building permit at, 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 at any one point. And now wants to build it, bring it up to code so they can sell the property. They've had a lot of discussions with our city staff and they've all been positive, uh, discussions. He has secured a structural engineer review and a report that has also been supplied to the city. And based on the building inspector report, substantial work is required to satisfy all building permit requirements. So that is, is part of the motion and I agree with that. And I also agree with, if we can satisfy, uh, if we can meet the requirements of satisfaction of the building inspector, then we should approve the variance. And I also agree, uh, that there should be a fine attached, uh, to it in some form and I'm happy with the fine that is being suggested.
Anything further, counsel? Counsel Hebert?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, through administration, through you? Uh, the, when we hear the applicant is talking about this, uh, sunroom has been in the making for many years. If, uh, a building permit is required, is issued, is there an end date to when the building has to be completed and meet the standards set by the engineer? Or can that be part of the motion?
Counsel could choose to set a deadline if it chooses. Uh, the general practice is that once a building permit is issued, uh, work that pertains to it needs to be initiated within six months. Uh, there isn't, uh, typically a, uh, a set deadline by the time that work needs to be completed. So if there is a particular date that counsel has in mind, it could make that amendment to the approving resolution.
Then I would just ask of Mr., uh, Counselor Swakstra if he would, uh, agree to a friendly amendment that, uh, it be completed by the end of two thousand twenty four?
I don't think that's necessary. I, I think that the conditions the staff have outlined are already sufficient.
Thank you. When I'm looking at this, uh, I went, I also went to have a look at the, uh, sunroom. Um, Mr. Taves has been a, uh, I believe a real estate, uh, agent in Steinbeck for many, many years. So find a little concern, and he's also built residences in town. Find a little concerning that he didn't know he needed a permit. But under the circumstances, uh, the, it fits in the area, the people in the area aren't objecting. Uh, I also agree that a penalty is appropriate in this case. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further counsel? Anything closing?
No.
Counsel, these are always difficult decisions. Cause this is not always the way, this isn't the way it, it should happen, but it does happen this way. But I, I, I do believe, like, it's with reluctance that I support this motion, but I, there's two things here that stand out to me. The applicant has remorse and the applicant is willing to do whatever it takes to make this work. And, and he does recognize the structural work that needs to be done, significant, and he's prepared to do it. And, and, um, I have also heard, I've also, as you have said, uh, Mr. Taves, if you have said good things and fond things of our, of our staff, our staff have said the same about you. They, they have said that they, that you've been good to deal with in a, in a case that's not pleasant to work with, you've been, you have been good to deal with to them. So for that reason, I will, for those two reasons, normally I would, I would not support something like this. I think structures that do not have permits, in, in the past, we've had them removed, but in this case, I think this is a one off and, and will probably, we should make a, uh, an adjustment for that. And seeing as you are going to bring it up to standard and it will be a safe building for many, many years to come, I think that will, that will sufficiently suffice for this. Call for the question. All's in favor? Posed, that is carried. Thank you. Counsel? Oh, look at that. It's just a little after seven forty five. We have, uh, we have two delegations to make, counsel. Uh, we've got Roger Storzczek, Storzczek. And Roger, sorry if I ruined your name, but I'm, I'm Mennonite. I can't say the Ukrainian names that well. He's from Manitoba Municipal Assessment Services and he's came to talk to us about the twenty twenty five reassessment. Again, Roger, I'm sorry if I ruined your name.
It's totally okay.
Yeah. Mostly when we meet, I just call you Roger.
Yeah, and usually if someone asks me for my name, I just spell it. I spell my last name so, to make it much easier for everybody.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will try my best to speed through this as much as we can, but, uh, still some important information to go over. Uh, I work with the assessment office and we have recently completed our, uh, two thousand twenty five reassessed, reassessment for the entire province of Manitoba. Uh, I'll just get right into page one. And this report will provide counsel with, with an overview of the impact of the reassessment of two thousand twenty five in your municipality. For two thousand twenty five, the assessed values of all properties will be updated to a reference date of April first, two thousand twenty three market values from April first, two thousand twenty one market values. Uh, properties assessments were last updated in two thousand twenty three. Uh, how do we establish market value for reassessments? Uh, first one is to review cost information that we collect over a two-year cycle, uh, review sales information that, uh, is deemed to be market value, uh, so essentially willing buyers and willing sellers. And then we also review income information for, uh, revenue bearing properties, whether it's strip malls or apartments or, uh, motels or hotels, regional malls, we do review their income information. So everything that we report today is really based on what is happening in the market and is essentially being set, uh, by your ratepayers or your, uh, clients in your municipality. We're simply just reporting back what we found in the last two years. This report will provide details on how taxable assessments have changed in your municipality and across the province and how reassessment two thousand twenty five will impact municipal and school taxes. Impacts in this report reflect two thousand twenty five modeling. Some assessment changes, uh, could still occur in your municipality that affect actual impacts. So as an example, uh, one of your major projects, well, actually two of your major products that you do have, uh, in the city of Steinbeck right now would also be the event center, um, even though it's maybe not necessarily a taxable impact, but as well as the, uh, Penn Co, uh, corporate headquarters, which will have a substantial assessment that will change your assessment base for two thousand twenty five. Objectives of reassessing properties, uh, include equity. All properties across the province are regularly, regularly reassessed to ensure assessments keep, uh, pace with changing market conditions. Fairness, property taxes are paid according to the market value of your property. Keeping assessments current is one way to ensure everyone pays, um, their fair share of taxes. And also provide a greater rate pair understanding, updating assessments makes it easier for property owners to understand and evaluate their assessments. Page, uh, two is probably the most important, uh, page of the report. Uh, the reassessment reflects how property values have changed since the last reassessment. Uh, they can be attributed to a combination of changes to supply and demand for real estate, new construction, as well as improvements to existing properties. The province's taxable assessment has increased by thirteen point two billion or thirteen percent to one hundred and eleven point two billion, up from ninety eight billion last reassessment. Your municipality's taxable assessment has increased by a hundred and fifty eight million or thirteen percent to one point four billion, and that's up from one point two four two million, billion, sorry, in two thousand twenty four. Changes in your municipality's taxable assessment, uh, by property class, uh, single family residential saw an increase of fifteen point seven percent. Apartments, uh, saw an increase of five point seven percent. Condominiums, so apartment style or, uh, residential, residential style condominiums saw an increase of eleven point two percent. For a total average, uh, increase for residential property is fourteen point two percent. Armed property, although limited in the city of Steinbeck, saw an increase of twenty two point four percent. Commercial and industrial properties saw an average increase of ten point four percent. Institutional property, which would be your schools, your churches, your hospitals, saw an increase of six point nine percent. Pipeline property saw an increase of twenty one percent. And designated recreational property, which would be the golf course in the city of Steinbeck, saw an increase of six point eight percent. This leads to a total, uh, average increase of twelve point seven percent across the city of Steinbeck. Some additional numbers, there were, based on April first, two thousand, sorry, April second, two thousand twenty one to April first, two thousand twenty three, there are approximately , uh, one thousand one hundred and fifty eight sales. Of that, approximately nine hundred and twenty two were single family residential sales, uh, twelve multi-residential sales, which will include land, some land transactions as well as land and building transactions, a hundred and thirty seven residential condominium sales, seven, uh, properties with farm class on it, and also seventy six, uh, properties with other property, which is typically associated to commercial. Moving on to page three, uh, I will give a brief rundown of this page, uh, and then just kind of explains how the tax will impact, how this will affect potential property taxes going forward. Assessment increases, decreases resulting from assessment do not necessarily mean increases and decreases. So one common phone call we get is my assessment went up twenty five percent, my taxes are going to go up twenty five percent and I can't afford that. That, that's not necessarily how it works. So we'll get into greater detail of that, but that's just one misconception that we do here on a regular basis. Property assessment simply provides the basis of distributing taxes among your property owners. So the assessment office creates the assessment base, the city establishes their budget and carries forward with their day. Tax and mail rates are set by counsel for municipal levies, school divisions for, uh, special levies, and the provincial, uh, government sets the education support levy. Shifting of three taxes of these, uh, sorry, of the three tax levies occurs between and within property classes when property assessments increase or decrease relative to the average on a municipal, school division and provincial wide basis. Only properties seeing above average increases, increases will likely have an increase in taxes. Uh, the impact of the reassessment two thousand twenty five on property taxes, uh, in your municipality is shown on the following pages. Impacts do not take into account other taxes levied on a part of your municipality. Uh, I'll focus on probably just the general municipal levy. Uh, property tax impacts have been calculated using the following methodology. A baseline for the municipal tax was determined by first applying to two thousand twenty three tax levels against the two thousand twenty four assessment to estimate the two thousand twenty four general municipal levy. For estimated two thousand twenty five general municipal taxes, the general mail rates were recalculated to raise the same amount of tax on the two thousand twenty five assessment. So essentially what we're saying, we estimated your budget for two thousand twenty four, we're going to assume that that budget hasn't changed for two thousand twenty five. No, I understand that's maybe not the most realistic, uh, scenario, but it does just give an idea of what does reassessment do to the general taxpayer. I won't spend a lot of time on page four because it does include the, uh, school tax portion of it. I think page five is much more beneficial to, to each and every one of you. And that table below, uh, illustrates how municipal levy of each class of your property in your municipality is impacted by reassessment two thousand twenty five. So based, uh, keep in mind, uh, actually the bottom two bullet points are probably the most important when we're reviewing the table. Properties with an assessment increase less than twelve point seven percent should see a municipal tax decrease. Properties with an assessment increase greater than twelve point seven percent should see a mu, uh, municipal tax increase. And this is on page five, just in case. So again, assuming the budget stays the same between the two tax years, we would typically see anyone below the average pers, or average increase of twelve point seven percent would see a decrease. So how does that affect, uh, the tax change? We'd see a small shift to single family residential of two point seven percent, uh, a shift to farm properties at eight point six percent and, uh, seven point four percent shift to pipeline properties. Apartments, condos, uh, commercial industrial properties, institution- institutional properties, and recreational properties would see a shift away from them, so. Page six includes some councils' options to moderate impacts. I won't touch on this today. You have a great city manager that is familiar with these possible options, as well as municipal services. Overall, the percentage changes aren't aren't drastic compared to some of our other municipalities that we are seeing that, but I've been a part of assessment for seventeen years, and I haven't seen anyone take up any of these options. So I'll just move forward to page seven. The provincial property tax reduction. So the most important bullet of page seven is bullet number one, the Manitoba School Tax Rebate. For 2024, owners of residential and farm properties will receive a fifty percent rebate of their education property taxes applied directly to the property tax statement. So in years past, you may remember you've gotten your tax bill. Couple weeks later, you get a check from the government. That's, that check has now officially been eliminated. The, the, the reduction is automatically placed on your tax bills. So soon, I'm not sure when the tax bills are going out in the city of Steinbeck, you will see your typical homeowner's rebate, and then you'll see another Manitoba School Tax Rebate on that bill. Owners of properties will receive, owners of other properties, so again, most typically, commercial properties will receive a ten percent rebate of their education property taxes applied directly to their property tax statement. And we do have a couple links available to you for further information. Moving on to page eight. Ratepayers, so I guess one important aspect that I failed to mention today is that assessment notices for the city of Steinbeck have hit the mail stream as of today. So we expect probably, well, some maybe even tomorrow, but we expect by the end of the week that residents, property owners in the city of Steinbeck will have their assessment notice for 2025. Ratepayers have been informed or can receive additional information about reassessment 2025 in the following ways. A provincial website providing property assessments, maps, and answers to frequently asked questions is available. Anyone with internet access will be able to obtain this information. There is a lot of public information available free of charge. My property Manitoba is something that the government's been pretty excited about rolling out to the public. I've actually just signed up for the service. Essentially, it can now access and receive their assessment notices and detailed property assessment information online with your account. This will eliminate, in some cases, so in my case, I won't receive an assessment notice in the mail anymore. I will just get it by email, so. A toll-free customer service line is available for ratepayers to contact their local assessment office, and that's here in Steinbeck, and speak to an assessor. The toll-free number is provided on both the assessment notice and the assessment brochure. Assessment facts are also available, which is a series of informational sheets providing details about property assessment in Manitoba, have been made available at local assessment offices. I don't believe the city of Steinbeck has used the Open House platform. No, okay, I won't touch on that. And also, municipal administrators also do play an important role. So I can only imagine that we actually don't hear as many phone calls and inquiries as we get. I'm assuming that your staff here at the city office have probably dealt with some of them before they even get to our office, so. And that is everything for today. Is there any questions?
Any questions, Council? Go ahead, Council.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Roger, I'll use your first name.
Yep.
As well. I see that the last time that the properties were assessed was in 2023. It used to be, when I first got into councils, every four years, then went to every three, then it went to every two. Is it continued to be two, every two years that there's a reassessment now? Or is it?
So the original intent, and I, I'm actually a little bit hazy on that. I do believe we did sneak in one two-year cycle. And then when COVID became an issue in 2020, literally that month or the next following month, we were supposed to start our reassessment, recognizing how labor-intensive it is and working in close groups. It wasn't really an option. I think there was also a little bit of concern of what would may happen to the market in that. So essentially, into March of 2020, April 1st, 2020 was supposed to be our reference date. So we were a little bit hesitant to roll that out. So we did go to one three-year cycle, and then now we will continue on a two-year cycle.
Goes back to a two-year cycle. I see also that our municipal taxable assessment went up by thirteen percent, which was a provincial, same as a provincial.
Yep.
And yet, we actually went up fourteen point two percent when it came to our own municipality. How does that correlate? How do we average those numbers? Like on the, on page two, your, the point is that our total assessment went up thirteen percent, but our taxable assessment went up fourteen point two.
So that, that's just strictly residential?
Oh, that's factoring the bottom one in as well. Okay, I only worry about the residential for myself.
Well, Roger, thank you very much. Great presentation, and it gives us a nice snapshot of what's going on and what's, what's happened from 2021 to 2023. And it's, it's a good thing, it's a good thing that our properties are going up because, well, they, they're appreciating as, as we are, as we are working with them, paying them off, making them look nicer as well.
Yeah, even with the economical changes, Steinbeck is still showing to be a very strong urban center for, for growth and demand and most supply for that matter as well, so.
Well, I think if you look back historically, Steinbeck's always had a very long economy and, and growth. I don't think we've ever been in a negative growth cycle. I think we've always been, even though it was only one or two percent, we've always been growing. So that's, that's very positive for our community.
And for interest sake, from the last, the reassessment of 2023, which would have been referencing April 1st, 2021, like the, the growth was eight point three percent. So it's a little bit stronger this year than, than last reassessment.
That's good, thank you. Council, are there any questions for Roger? Thank you very much for the work you do and how you make sure we all keep paying our taxes.
Well, you're, you're collecting the taxes. I'm just the assessor, so. Have a good rest of your evening.
You bet, thank you very much. Okay, we, Council, we have seven B. This is Cindy Rempel-Patrick and Heather Jawett. This is referring to Southeast Cancer Support Services, Inc. I apologize for the delay, but it's been a busy, busy night. Pardon?
Yeah. Thank you for that announcement. Thank you very much, Council.
Thank you, Heather, for coming. Good to see you.
Mayor Funk and Councilors for giving us the opportunity to present to you. I am board chair for Southeast Cancer Support Services, which is a newly, a newly registered not-for-profit charitable entity. And we have Cindy Patrick Rempel, who most of you will know, who is board chair. I have Dr. Maria Krenz, Health Service. And Bev Dewick, who is oncology nurse. A lot of you will already know these people. And Irene Mandell, who is a social worker. So these are board members who are, and I, I want to tell you a little bit about Southeast Cancer Support Services because I was beyond shocked to find out that there's been such a program up and running already in Winkler for approximately twenty-five years and Portage for twenty-one years, and with nothing here in Steinbeck. And people have said to me when I've told them, it's another charity, but there is a need. And what, what this charity does is support people with cancer. And one of the main problems people are running into is transportation. It's a huge problem. You know, the breadwinner is off work with cancer. He may have to come to Steinbeck for treatment from an outlying area or from Steinbeck to Winnipeg for radiation for eight weeks or six weeks, and it's a huge cost to families. And with this, and we're finding that there's much more of a need than we thought. We have, we're hearing about people who are not going for treatment quite simply because they cannot get to the appointments. For me, that is quite surprising, and I think we'll all agree that access to healthcare should be a basic need. So when I was asked to come on board and I heard this, for me, it was an easy yes. Also, the, the first part of this, our rollout is to support for transportation, for, I mean, parking and incidental expenses when you're traveling. You might have a day-long appointment. And so food, things like this. I mean, I've walked the walk, and I know how much it costs, and I was very lucky. And several of the board members have also had experience. So we're very aware of the costs and the problems that arise. We're also, we're hoping to provide money for incidentals, such as somebody's sick, the health, the benefits don't kick in for two to three weeks, and people are struggling to put food on the table. So just to give people a hand up, a hand out, not a handout, a hand up, a helping hand. So that, we're also planning on introducing, further down the road, other support groups, with support groups of children with cancer or parents have cancer, and other things such as lymphedema treatments. There's, there's a whole host of things that we can add on. We have been to Morden and Winkler and Portage, and the mayor of Portage is actually the ED for the Portage Charity. And she's, she was very helpful. And we've used their template to set up and, and see where the need is. They are using over fifty percent of their budget is going to travel expenses. So it's just getting people to their appointments. There's a lot of elderly people. But we have a massive outlying area. There are eighty-two communities that we cover in this southeast area. A lot of them come to Steinbeck for their treatment. There's a lot of elderly people. The outlying communities are often elderly demographics. So, you know, their, their peers are also elderly and unable to travel. So there is a definite need. We are asking Council to help with capital costs. And I know we're not buying a building, and this is probably not where you normally help out. But the capital costs, we're going to have to have an office space. We're going to need space for privacy. We can't just have it one open office and everybody walking in. This is a tough time for people, and they need privacy. We need, we will need staff to help coordinate. We're going to have volunteer drivers out in communities. And so there's somewhere, they will need coordinating. We want a meeting space for support groups, other areas for resources, such as wigs and hair coverings. And we need to be able to display these. You know, you just don't want to show somebody, oh, here's a wig, and it's in a pile, a box full of other wigs, and help yourself. We need to do it in a sympathetic way. So we are asking for help with the capital expenses, with the startup, the computers, the computer programs, the furniture, it all comes down. And we are asking Council for a forty thousand dollar helping hand. So if you have any questions, Cindy is able to answer the financial questions.
Well, I'll just add, actually, I'll just finish the, this half, then you can ask questions, how about? I haven't been up here for a while. I just got this flashback, and I just, just need to take a moment. Our presentation reflects that we are following the business model of Morden and, and Portage because it's been very successful. And when someone's doing something right, we like to follow their success. And we don't have numbers because we're new, but I'd like to give you a few numbers of, from their communities. For example, you know, almost forty-two hundred trips were provided in one year, this last year, from, in the Morden and, and region area. And that's an incredible amount of trips that, that were either done by family members or they were done by volunteer drivers and that they were assisted with. And also, there was two hundred and fifty-one new patients that came up this year. So to the existing patients that were in that center, two hundred and fifty-one. So cancer is, it's increasing, it's affecting more people all the time. There was thirty-one patients they could provide lymphedema treatments to. A hundred patients, they provided skin screening treatments that needed it. They brought the, the devices and diagnostics into the city so people could be tested there because skin cancer is on the rise. There was nineteen clients who they provided wigs and head covering. So there is definitely a need. And when we compare their community to our community, there, there's so many similarities. And I just feel that this is a good projection of, of what we can expect to see besides the transportation program, all the other programs they'll be running. They run between twelve and fifteen other programs in, in addition to transportation. And that is, consumes nearly sixty percent of their budget. So the program, the money that's raised, that money, sixty percent of it goes directly to the cancer patients. And that's a high number. And, and we're glad to see that, that, that amount is just in the transportation program. They've never turned away one patient or a family member who required some form of financial, emotional, or physical assistance. And that is success. And that's what we will aspire to do. And we'll do everything we can do to make sure that access to cancer healthcare will not be denied in our city and in our region in this, in these services. And our proposed budget, we've been working with them. So we have looked at their budgets and their growth, and we have used that as a, as, as our gauge. And so we show fifty-eight percent of our budget of every dollar raised is going to go directly to the cancer patient who lives in this city or this region. So as she explained, it's the first phase, and we will expand. There are many expenses involved in our, in a cancer journey that, like she says, our medical system does not cover. And we do need a facility, and we do need a place to, to set up and to be able to provide this. We need to create awareness so people can get this help, and then also for people who want to volunteer and contribute. So it's a real community effort. It's, it says "community" all over, and it's very, very beneficial. Many of us in this room, as Heather said, and, and you, would have resources. You might have family members that live here and friends that can drive you in. But we just heard of the, of the dad from La Broke who's sleeping on his daughter's couch in Winnipeg for six weeks because he had no access to Winnipeg, and, and the gentleman from Vassar who is not having any treatments because he can't get to Steinbeck. And it just seems unacceptable. It's just, in our day and age, and in our community, we have a very generous community, and we have a very giving people in the region. And we just feel that if people knew about these, these needs, they would, they would respond. We've received enormous support since we started this in March, our fundraising campaign in March. And we accepted a challenge from Bethesda Foundation to raise a significant amount of money, of pledges for the next five years so that would ensure that we are sustainable. And we have to raise that in the next ninety days. And so we are working hard. It's been very challenging, but we are, we're very confident that we can do it. So we're coming to one of our, our supporters to, to get us off the ground. Cancer is here, it's increasingly affecting more lives, and so we need to start now. So as she said, our plan is to open an office space and, and move on from there. And I know from my own journey when I was young and my father was diagnosed, it, our world stopped. I had to come home from university. My daughter, my sister couldn't go start her schooling, and my mom had to run a business, and every day was cancer, cancer, cancer. So when one person has it, your whole family has it. The whole village around your family feels the effects of it. And right now, in this day and age, the expenses that go along with trying to get treatment and afford to have access to it is, is increasingly, and is increasing. So it's, there, there's just a definite need. In summary, the need is what we're wanting to impress upon you. We've shown you what the Southeast Cancer Support Services can do, and we've shown you how we can do it. But we want you to understand why we are starting the Resource Center and why we want to take care of our cancer patients in the area and fellow citizens, and can, we, why we want to contribute in many ways to make our communities more healthy. And it's the why that we are asking you to, to use as you consider our request. And with your support, this And with your support, this Resource Center will become a reality. Thank you very much.
Thank you. One thing I would like to add is that Morden and Winkler have reported people from this area, funding them to get, to see if they can get a ride because there, there's nothing available in this area.
They're willing to drive there to get, to stay there and then to get regular trips to the city. It's just been, so it's just been phenomenal, the stories that we've heard now that we've become aware of the gap. There's just a big gap and it's part of our community, it's healthcare and we are a nonprofit entity, so unfortunately, healthcare doesn't fund us.
Are there any questions of council? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I certainly recognize that there is the need and I appreciate the effort that you're putting into this and getting this going. My question would be that you've mentioned that in addition to providing services within Steinbach, you're taking a regional approach. I mean, because obviously, you know, cancer doesn't have boundaries. So my question is, are you planning to approach other southeastern municipalities as well for funding supports?
Already have. And there's five on the list and we've already met with Franklin, the Reeve of Emerson Franklin.
Emerson Franklin, yep.
Yeah.
Good.
And Hanover knows we're coming and the one in Piney. I'm sorry, I don't know my RMs, but yeah, no, definitely. And in fact, they reached out to us when they heard that there was something like this happening because they know how hard it is for their citizens that are really remote to get to Steinbach.
There's support out in the rural communities as well, for sure.
Yeah, we've had businesses from the rural areas as well already. We haven't announced our organization formally yet because we really, we have to, we have to meet that target to get Bethesda's donation and then it will, that'll also give another donation. And so it's kind of like a domino effect. We have to make sure, ensure we have all that funding in place before we can really say we're in business.
Any other questions for council? Okay. I want to thank you very much. I want to thank you for what you're doing. And yeah, it definitely, definitely looks and sounds like you're standing in the gap where, a gap that's there that needs to be filled and I want to thank you for that. As far as the, we will take your grant request, we will take it back, we'll give it to administration, they'll get onto an agenda and we will discuss it and we will have an answer for it.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Administration. 9A, accounts payable, back of the book, looking for a motion to approve. Counselor Penner, second by Counselor Hebert. Call for the question, all's in favor. Oppose, that is carried. We have the financial statements, B, financial statements ending January 31st, 2024, looking for a motion to approve, Counselor Siemens, Counselor Hebert. Call for the question, all's in favor. Oppose, that is carried. We've got the financial statements ending February 28th, 2024. Also, back of the book, looking for a motion to approve, Counselor Penner, second by Counselor Hebert. Call for the question, all's in favor. We've got D, financial statements ending March 31st, 2024. Back of the book, motion approved by Counselor Hebert, second by Counselor Siemens. Call for the question, all's in favor. Oppose, that is carried. Financial statements ending April 30th, 2024. Your guys' turn. Counselor Penner, second by Counselor Hebert. Call for the question, all's in favor. That is carried. And we've got the financial statements ending May 31st, 2024. We're at this side, Counselor Siemens, second by Counselor Hebert. Call for the question, all's in favor. Oppose, that is carried. We've got 9G, the Reed Miller Chartered Professional Accountants, the Audit Financial Report. Council, we just looked at it this evening and we found no, we found nothing that was odd or different, but Mr. Rorty, would you like to introduce this file?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. As you noted, this document in the agenda package is the city's December 31st, 2023 financial report. It has been prepared by the city's auditor, Reed and Miller Chartered Professional Accountants. Council has met with the auditor. There was no unusual items identified that would prevent the city's acceptance and adoption of these financial statements as presented and administration would so recommend council pass the resolution accordingly.
Counsel, would you like to proceed? Counselor Swestra. Motion to approve, second by Counselor Hebert. We're all getting a little foggy here. Any comments?
No.
Call for the question, all's in favor. Oppose, that is carried. We've got H, 2023 Reserve Transfers. It's something we always do every year. Is there any, anything you would like to highlight, Mr. Rorty?
Well, that, the report is about the same length as it normally is. There's two pages of many line items that relate to a variety of revenue and expense items that affect the city's reserve funds during, during 2023. Now that council has adopted the 2023 financial statements, one other step that is required is just to ratify the actual reserve transfers that have occurred during the previous fiscal year. A lot of these particular items in respect of reserve funds, the city does generate revenues each year, some of which are dedicated specifically for future purposes. And in cases where there has been revenues generated that exceed related expenses, the city will normally augment a variety of reserve funds, for example, the Capital Development Reserve, the Committed Expenditure Reserve, the Land and Building Reserve, and as a result of overall transactions that have occurred during the year, both budgeted and unbudgeted. This list does represent the overall transactions and transfers to and from the reserves that are recommended. And overall, administration is recommending that council adopt this summary in reference to the reserve transfers effective for 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Rorty. Counsel, would you like to proceed? Counselor Penner, motion approved, second by Counselor Swestra. Call for the question, all's in favor. That is carried. Counsel, moving right along. 9E, Water Services Board Resolution. On page 129, we have a resolution for, to go to the Mantle Water Services Board for the, for 50% of the design cost for the Lagoon Forest Main Twinning Project that we're looking to be doing. So basically, all we need is a motion and then it'll go forward. Looking for a motion to approve, Counselor Penner, second by Counselor Swestra. Any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If there's basket funding that, and specific funding that the province has and if we don't get our name out there, we won't have access to it.
Anything further?
Counselor Penner convinced me.
Anything further of council? Anything in closing?
Nothing further.
Yes, counsel, we have not actually, from my recollection, we haven't used the Water Services Board for some time now. So I think it is time to access that funds. Call for the question, all's in favor. Oppose, that is carried. We have Bylaw 2249, Street renaming, Cooney Way to Superior Street. It's the third reading. Last time when we did this, I think we did the whole Superior thing to, just about to death. So I think we'll just, we'll look at, we're looking for a motion for a third reading to change Cooney Way to Superior Street. Counselor Hebert, second by Counselor Hebert. Any comments?
Only that this is new development, it's a good time to change the name. We've already done two readings. We got it approved.
Anything further?
Nothing further, thank you.
Further of council? Nothing in closing? Call for the question, all's in favor. Oppose, that is carried. We've got Bylaw 2217. This is referring to 205 McKenzie Avenue, third reading. This is, I believe, a property that is a single-family dwelling at this time and there was a public hearing. Now we're just finishing up third reading, we're just...
That's correct. The applicant and owner have returned the required development agreement and as such, excuse me, all of the conditions imposed by council for the adoption of this bylaw have been met. Recommendation is for council to give this bylaw a third reading.
Counsel, would you like to proceed? Counselor Swestra, motion approved, second by Counselor Penner. Any comments?
Let's vote.
Call for the question, you would like to speak?
I would like to speak against this motion because I have the last two. I voted against it the last two times as well. This is a piece of property that has got a single residence on it and there are no fourplexes in that area. This is directly across from the SRSS. It is beside a walkway and the crosswalk. It's on a busy through fare on school days and just a street park. When I play grandpa for the day and I have to take my grandkids to high school, whether it's 8:30 in the morning or at 4:30 in the afternoon or pick them up during the day because they call grandpa, it's busy. That intersection is very busy, right there at that crosswalk, it's extremely busy. On-site parking for seven vehicles might be enough, but we need to consider how that parking works. The street parking is jammed full from 8:00 in the morning till roughly 4:30 with students. They're going to be backing out onto a very busy street. I don't know how our garbage pickup works on this particular location, but a fourplex, does it require its own garbage pickup? Mr. Rorty?
That would be partly dependent on the configuration of the site and what other options are available.
There was no diagram in this, in this case during third reading, but I know there was during first and third reading. By allowing this rezoning, we're adding to congestion and there is a lot of congestion in that area. And I had a staff member who lived right beside that, he also complained on the ongoing amount of congestion, so we will be adding to that by approving this.
Okay. Anything further of council? Anything in closing?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Considering I voted for it the previous times, I will vote for it again and I don't have a problem with increasing density right beside a school. That is typically the kind of place where we would have more density.
Okay. Call for the question, all's in favor. Oppose, that is carried. We've got 9L, we've got business license on 142, looking for motion to approve. Counselor Penner, second by Counselor Hebert. No comments?
Question.
Oh, questions?
Question through you. Commercial square footage added. I have not, I don't recall that that's how we've...
This is business license.
We're doing business licenses. I'll do that too. Sure.
You can do permits next to.
Okay.
But we just need to get through this.
Approve businesses in Steinbach as well.
So it was Counselor Penner, Counselor Hebert, second. And you... Okay. Call for the question.
Let's vote.
All's in favor.
We're almost done, guys.
Okay, we got 9M, building permits, looking for motion to approve. Counselor Penner?
Yes.
Second by Counselor Penner. Go ahead.
I wanted to ask a question through you to administration.
Yes.
Commercial square footage added. I have not seen this reported like this before.
You have not.
Is this a mistake or is this what we're doing?
This is a new data point that administration is tracking to give our office and departments a better understanding as to not just commercial value, but what is the actual square footage that's being, being added in a commercial industrial setting.
So just for that point, it says this month we've added $4.7 million in commercial dollar value? And you're telling me that's only 1,327 square feet?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure how the amounts are calculated or what has, has been included or excluded, but that is a good question. That's something...
Yeah, that seems strange. And even going forward regardless, could we still keep the number we had there as well? The number of units? Plus, we could do the square footage if that's an important data point.
One other point I would raise is there is a significant permit at the bottom of page 143. It does indicate a commercial building, however, that permit is only for footings and foundation. My understanding would be that the square footage is likely not included as it is a foundation-only permit at this point.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, I don't mind if that's there, I just still want the number of units as well, like we had previously.
They're both there in the same column.
Pardon me?
Dwelling units is still there.
Take a look. That's two, there's two of them.
No, but that's not, okay, well, whatever. I still approve. I still make a motion to approve, even though I, yeah.
Anything, anything further, Counselor Penner?
I got sidetracked, so no, not anymore.
Okay, I can keep going. It's awesome how many residential units are being added. Hopefully, we continue to start moving more in that direction again for this year. Of course, it's a very strong year, so that's encouraging.
Anything further, Counselor Penner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, it's great to see that there's that proverbial balance that we're looking for between residential and commercial and another $8 million is a great month to go for and there's a lot of residential units that are coming up, so it's great to see.
Anything further of council? Anything in closing?
Do you want more? No.
Okay. Okay, counsel. No, totally excited about this month. I think it was a great month. It shows that industrial's strong, commercial's strong, and we are definitely growing in our residential numbers. Call for the question, all's in favor. Oppose, that is carried. Counsel, question period. Are there any questions of council? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to correspondence petitions. We've got the Zane Rat River Rose River watershed, minutes of April 16th, 2024, April 19th, and May 7th of 2024. Counsel, would you like to proceed? Take his information?
Yes.
We've got the Minister of Municipal and Northern Relations, Minister of Indigenous Economic Development. This is referring to the 203 PLT Reconciliation Grant. Counsel would like to take his information at this time. And we've got 11C, Minister of Transportation and Infrastructure, referring to Low Level Pedestrian Crossing Lights Resolution. They're just letting us know that we, they got our letter, so...
Looks like they took it as information.
Yeah, they took it, they took it as information, so we will too. Okay? And I got one more thing, guys, just one more thing. This is actually pretty good. So we got Other Business, JCPenney Library Board Member Appointment. We've appointed Cindy Friesen to the library board and we're just looking for a motion to ratify that. Counselor Swestra, second by Counselor Hebert. Any comments? Anything?
Nothing further. I think she's a really good addition to the board.
I thought so too when I interviewed her. Call for the question, all's in favor. Oppose, that is carried. Looking for motion to adjourn? Counselor Penner, second by Counselor Hebert. Call for the questions, all's in favor. Oppose, that is carried. Next council meeting, Tuesday, July 2nd, 2024, 7:30.